Hello, everybody. The time is 6:05 and this is a briefing workshop of the Leander City Council. At this time, if we could take a roll, Ms. Graber.
Councilmember Catherine Battalion Parker.
Here.
Councilmember Michelle Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Jason Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Christine Sederquist.
Here.
Mayor Protan Chris Ernik.
Here.
Councilmember Marcy Cannon.
Here.
Mayor Troy Hill.
Here. We do have a quorum, so we can proceed. This time, we're going to switch the order, council, if that's okay, just because I think it'll be a better use of time. So, Mr. John is going to be going first. And Mr. John is here to talk about the Davis House. As a result of previous conversations about the house and direction that we were going to go, Mr. John was somebody that we reached out to in regards to the Texas State Historical Society. Is that it? Is that the right one?
Texas Historical Commission.
Texas Historical Commission, sorry. So, he's here today to talk about kind of the next steps that we could take in order to have it designated in ways that would allow us to get grant money to restore the house. So, thank you very much for coming.
My pleasure.
Yeah, so you and I had met. We talked about kind of a pathway that we could take to enable the city for really very little cost to the city to be able to get this house restored. And what that pathway may be, if you could just kind of go through that briefly with council.
Well, the pathway, as we discussed and also discussed with Ms. Thompson at the Historic Preservation Commission, is that as a municipality, it's rare at best that you would be awarded grants to do the restoration of this property. So, what really needs to happen is that it needs to be transferred to a nonprofit. And that could be any organization that's here in town, whether it's the Friends of the Davis House, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce, somebody like that, that would be open to...
You will be living there. It is your help. I'm just saying.
And that would do a couple of things. Number one, it would open up the possibilities of grants. The second thing it would do is allow you to be able to use the historic tax credits that are available. Municipalities aren't eligible for that. No government entity is, but a nonprofit is. And first thing I know you're going to say is, "Well, you know, nonprofits, they don't pay taxes." Yeah, it's kind of sort of. There's two programs. The federal program's been around a long time. The state of Texas just recently got a program within the past five or six years. You can combine those two programs, 20% and 25%, and get a 45% tax credit on qualified rehabilitation expenses. Now, what do you do with that? A nonprofit can monetize the state tax credit, which means, and there's a pretty lively market right now for selling tax credits on the market. You can't do that with the federal credit, so that would eliminate that. But you can monetize the state tax credit program. As a matter of fact, I'm working on a project right now where the owner of the property is selling his tax credits to a bank and getting 92 cents on the dollar, which is pretty decent. So, that's one possibility. But, like I said, it has to go to a nonprofit organization.
So, if a nonprofit owns it, can they, let's say it was rented to a restaurant for instance, or, and I'm just picking a restaurant, but would then the activity generated out of that be taxable to the city? I mean, something we realize tax benefits, just like any other business being open?
I really can't answer that part of it. I don't know about the income off of any rental. That's something you'd have to ask a CPA or a tax attorney. I can only address the historic tax credits that are used for restoration work.
For restoration. Any idea? If a nonprofit rents it out to a for-profit, is that activity that the for-profit takes thereby generating taxes for the city?
If you, as the city, own the property, you rent it out to a for-profit entity, then the property becomes taxable to you for the purpose of property taxes. If you're conveying it to a nonprofit, I'm not going to know the answer in that scenario.
Okay.
But if the city continues to own it and hold it, and then you rent it to a for-profit entity, then some component, if not all, of your property tax would become assessed and payable. And you could pass that on to the tenant.
Yeah, okay.
I think that's true.
Now, let me back up a second and talk about my comment that municipalities are not eligible for historic tax credits. Actually, you are. However, there's a big however. You would have to, it has to be for a profit-making entity. So, you could restore the Davis House, rent it out to a for-profit, a restaurant, whatever it is, but have to have a minimum of a 39-year lease. Don't know many people that are going to sign a lease that long with a city. So, that kind of takes everything off the table. So, transferring it to a not-for-profit, that's your advantage. Grants and historic tax credits.
And so, it goes to a nonprofit, and then the steps they would take to realize grant money or private money investments or endorsements or whoever, you know?
Sure, yeah, whatever. Donations.
What does that process look like? I know we had talked about getting the county to designate it as a historical site. Is that correct?
Well, it's not the county that designates it. Your county, Williamson County Historical Commission, is the funnel that sends it up to the state. The state designates it, either by giving you a historical marker, which is nice, but doesn't do a whole lot. Recognition primarily. Or a state historic landmark, which then kicks in a whole lot of good things as well. It can even go a step further and be placed on the National Register of Historic Places, which would be at the federal level. So, there's several steps. And as we talked about before, you need to start local. Your local Historic Preservation Commission needs to officially designate it. Because one of the things that will be looked at, if it goes up to the state or even the feds, they'll look to see that Leander, "Oh, Leander has a Historic Preservation Commission. They've designated this property?" "No." "Hmm, well, if they don't care that much about it, then why should we?" So, it's critical that they designate it as soon as possible.
What?
An official designation.
What are the limitations once it's designated?
None.
You can change the entire building?
No, I wouldn't go that far, no.
Can you add to it?
What would you add to it for?
For a commercial kitchen.
You'd have to run that out the fly pole and say...
That's what I thought. Yeah.
It's possible.
And a landmark designation, same thing.
Same thing.
You're going to be limited on any change to the actual structure.
I wouldn't use the term limited. It's all about negotiation. Historic preservation is about managing change. And so, it's a matter of negotiating with the entities. What is you want to do? Why do you want to do it? What effect it'll have on the historic resource? If it's detrimental to the historic resource? If not, sure.
And who has the final say on that?
The state.
The state does.
State does. Texas Historical Commission.
I have a question. If we had it designated and then wanted to open it up for any sort of public use, whether rented out or on our own, would we have to make it ADA compliant?
You should anyway. Yeah, at least the first floor. Don't have to make the entire building, because you don't want to go through the expensive avenue to add an elevator. That's a $75,000 hickey. So, you don't want to do that. Totally unnecessary.
When we walked through it, we talked about the width of the staircase. That would have to be corrected.
No, no. No, there's, as a matter of fact, the notebook that I was given. I think Ms. Carroll gave me this notebook, and I saw some interesting reports and letters and some other correspondence and email traffic about... There's a misnomer out there that historic buildings have to be brought up to code. No, they don't. There's no such thing, really. And the way the historic entities would look at this, like the stair, for instance, it may not meet current codes, but it was okay when it was built. And to the best of my knowledge and maybe yours, there was no critical accidents and nobody died because of that stair being too narrow.
You're talking about the inside?
Yeah, on the inside. And what they would look at is that that stair is what they would call a character-defining feature of the house. It's the original stair. You don't want to change that. As a matter of fact, they wouldn't let you change it. It's still useful. I've been up and down it. It's fine.
So, for commercial use, it would have to be changed, but not for...
No.
Where did we get that?
I don't know.
Think of all the curse words over 128 years from people that are hitting their head on the street.
Yes.
Well, people were shorter then, too.
They were.
So, that's okay. Yeah. So, just dump.
So, as far as your involvement, we have something on our agenda tonight about authorizing the as-bills, as you call it. Can you explain what that is?
That is, just to get things started, because from what I know right now, there is no documentation on the house whatsoever. So, we need a place to start. So, we would do what's called a set of as-bills. Pretty simple. Basically, floor plans of what's there now, roof plan and elevations. So, we have something to start with. And start planning what's going to happen on the interior. Start planning the exterior restoration. So, that's what the as-bills are.
Is it just the plans?
Gives us a pointed departure, a place to start.
Is it just the floor plans or are you going to structure to it?
Don't need to, at this point. Totally unnecessary. This is just floor plan, roof plan, elevations.
Does that shouldn't cost you much to get that at all?
Or you submit a proposal for it.
Now, in fact, he had talked to...
As a matter of fact, I've enlisted my new best friend here, who happens to be your only architect in Leander.
Really?
He owns the building across from...
Introduce yourself, Bill.
Or down from Crossing. Across from...
Oh, okay.
He's a block away. So, he has offered to help, since he's right here, a block away from the house. And so, he'll help create the documents.
Can you explain if we accept any federal or state grant dollars? What impact does that have on what we can do with the building?
Well, what I can tell you is that there are a whole lot of state and federal grant dollars out there right now. So, you would be better off going to private foundations. And each one is different as far as the limitations that they have. What it can be used for, how it can be spent. But as far as what you can do with the building, like I said, it's all about negotiating.
Okay.
I mean, the one thing you don't want to do anyway is to change the historic character of the building. You don't want to do that. Why would you? Then, all of a sudden, you don't have a historic building anymore. So, you kind of defeated the purpose. So, there aren't the nasty rules and regulations a lot of people think. You know, "Oh, if we get the state involved, we can paint it green." Well, you can. You probably don't want to, but you could. So...
If we have it designated, though, don't we have to submit plans for every change to either the local, state, or federal?
Depends on what you want to do.
We want to replace the roof. We got to replace the chimney. We need to reinforce the floors.
That's only if there's funding attached to it. Just because it's designated doesn't mean you have to submit anything to anybody. If there's funding involved, then yes.
Any other questions?
There will be. There will be, a lot, yeah.
Yeah, it's just the beginning, so obviously...
Just the beginning, yeah. But designations are important to get the ball rolling, because then that opens you up to funding sources. And start talking to foundations. There are several foundations in the state of Texas. The Meadows up in Dallas, Houston and down, there are a lot of them. Summerlee Foundation that provide funding for historic restoration.
Kathy, do you want to, do you have any questions or anything?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No, this is all territory I travel in also. But I have not met Mr. John, so I need to...
Howdy.
I am Kathy Howell, and I am the president of, say, our Friends of the Davis House.
Ah, yes.
I wasn't invited to join now.
I know the great lady.
Now, I'm president of Mason Heritage Foundation, and we're a 501(c)(3) and doing a lot of restoration and stuff. Not working on in the area. And we have said Mason Heritage Foundation might be a vehicle for this house, for the city to designate it to Mason Heritage Foundation. And the Leander Historical Preservation Commission, which is the city commission for historical preservation, is working on the wording and paperwork for Leander to have a historical designation system to designate and honor historical properties.
Good, very good.
So, we don't meet again until January, and we have been working on that. So, those things are in the works.
Great, good.
They're just not, you know, totally finished. Well, Mason Heritage Foundation is a 501(c)(3) with IRIs designated. That's not a problem, so...
All right, so we'll get... Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Of course, my pleasure.
And we appreciate and look forward to having your help on this asset that we have and maximizing its use for.
Thank you.
Everyone.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Sure, my pleasure.
Thank you, appreciate it.
What about the Dyson House?
I'm going to send you the address.
Oh, okay. Because I may get it tomorrow, like I mentioned.
Oh, I'll see.
Is it going to be, is it open?
You really can't...
We'll talk.
Yeah, I'll find it.
Do I need weapons?
Yes.
We'll connect you to the right people.
Very good. Thank you.
All that sort of stuff.
We do want to see you again.
Okay.
Okay. Next, we are going to have a presentation from Bill Polk for, well, Leander Springs.
Mayor, helps the people, new city manager. Hello. I am delighted to bring you a Christmas present.
Yay.
Early.
Great.
And I would like to introduce Lisa Moore, who will describe, she is the president.
Ms. Lagoon. Ms. Lagoon. It's a team effort. And I brought some brochures. I know some of you might not be interested in them. They're about 10 pounds, so I can only carry so many. But I have enough to at least share between you all. It's a bit of an older brochure, but it's good visuals.
Okay, so the black ties are...
That's great. You're flexible. Yeah, go ahead.
Hello, everybody. First, I would thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to present our project. In front of everyone, our entire team is present here. We are being represented, of course, you know, we started with four partners. We are Island Development Group, who is wanting to bring this project to Leander. Tim from STG Designs, he is our architect for the project. Lisa, and this lagoon happens, it's a special lagoon product, and Lisa is the representative from there. We also have Phil from SCC Designs, who will be helping us with the additional steps. Jerry from Prowl's Engineering, and the island team is here to show that we're coming to you guys and the big group, and we appreciate you all being present in the group. So, the project currently is named Leander Springs. We are going with it. And it's definitely an experience beyond imagination, is what I want to say, because the idea is to bring a beach experience to Leander. So, it'll take interesting kinds of imaginations. For the site, we are wanting to locate this project at the intersection of 2243 and 183A. I'm thinking you're aware of where this is. Michelle, will you? Yep? Okay. And so, it is at the intersection of 183A and 2243. It has been designated as a TOD district. And this is our concept plan superimposed on the site. We are wanting to bring a mixed-use product to the site, and we believe Leander, Texas, is the place to be. It is growing. It is business-friendly. You guys have welcomed us with open arms, so it is the right place to be. This is where I pass on to Lisa, because I think the conversation needs to start with the star of the show, right? It's the beach. I said imagine, so she's going to take us into our imaginary world.
And I'm going to just talk, so you might want to flip through some of these as I talk. And yeah, feel free, because I'm all over the place in conversation. And feel free to stop me at any time, because I could talk for hours. So, I made notes on, just to keep this short and brief, but usually, there's a lot of questions. Some of you may know a little bit more about our company than others. We're based in Chile, and we came to the US just a couple of years ago. So, last year was a big year for us, with our first lagoons out of the ground in the US. However, we have about 50 around the world. Everything from 150-acre lagoon planned in Dubai, to a 30-acre in Egypt, to a 16-acre in Indonesia. So, we're 10-acre in Cabo. So, we're kind of all over the place. Historically, our lagoons have been private amenities for either residential communities or hospitality projects. And that's changed a lot in the last couple of years as we have entered the US market. We have about five lagoons right now in the US that are operational, four that are under construction, and about 20 more that are in planning. So, we've hit the road, kind of running here in the US, and the product has been, has really evolved as we've entered this market. And like I said, historically, we were a private amenity, meaning the lagoon was only accessible by the users of that real estate development or that hotel project. And what we saw when we came into the US, we used the same kind of concept. We were actually in masterplan communities. And we just, it was, we were such a big hit here. We had so many calls and emails from the public saying, "What does it cost to get in? I want to bring my family down. You know, I want to have a wedding there." And so, that's when we started exploring what we call public access lagoons. And I've been with the company about three years now, and I would say 98% of my projects on my plate are mixed-use developments with a component of what we call public access. That way, now the amenity is also accessible to the residents of that development, but also to the community. That way, you don't have a bunch of soured neighbors sitting on the outside looking in saying, "I want to be able to get into the beach or the lagoon." Now, most of my developments, if not all of my developments on my plate for the central US market, have that public access component. And honestly, we're not a swimming pool. We're not an amenity where it's so small that it's going to be crowded if you have the public come in. I mean, our average, our smallest lagoon is typically around two acres in size. And there's no limits on how large it can be. You know, there's one in Dubai going in at 150 acres, which is crazy. It's Dubai, though, so it's a different world. We don't really, it's like Disneyland over there. But I would say, on average, most of the lagoons on my plate with my mixed-use developments are probably somewhere between four to six acres. You only get bigger if you have a bigger development and there's more assets to put around that lagoon. So, you can grow the lagoon as you have a use for it. But you don't want to build a 30-acre lagoon for a small development. You've got to think about construction cost and about maintenance cost. And it has to make sense for the development, just like any amenity. But like I said, all my projects right now on my plate, Texas is my biggest market. Probably talking to about 30 different developers from north, south, east, west, Texas, all over, small towns, big towns. Now that we have our, we have two lagoons out of the ground in Texas, a two-acre in Houston and a five-acre in Dallas. And we have a 12-acre lagoon under construction in Texas City on the way to Galveston area. So, we're ranging different sizes, but most going forward are mixed-use types of developments. And when I say mixed-use, it's important to realize and understand the importance of the diversity of the assets and the users that are using the lagoons. Most of our mixed-use have a hotel component, have a multifamily or some sort of high-density residential component, and have retail component to it. Having those users really helped create that morning, day, and night user groups for the lagoon. So, it's not just a swimming pool that's only being used, you know, certain hours and certain times of the day, and also 12 months of the year. So, you're able to do numerous types of programming to keep it an active venue, an active attraction, an active entertainment zone for that development. And when I say retail, I think, you can see, this is just a concept plan here that she's showing. We are in the middle of kind of redefining really what needs to go here, because, you know, we go through numerous iterations of what this looks like after we get into more so the development of the site plan and what that looks like. But this is just a basic concept of the different types of programming that you'll see in our mixed-use developments. This retail area here, you always are going to want to have some sort of boardwalk area. That way, you have what we call open access. So, anyone from the outside community can come in and have lunch or dinner on the water and have that dining experience, that viewing experience. Perhaps mom wants to go shopping and, you know, the kids want to go have lunch there. Or a lot of times, we even have a little pier out on that dock, so the kids can go rent a kayak for the hour that mom is shopping or having lunch with her friends. That is a very important component, because it's also a teaser for the development. So, it's a way to bring people into the development and say, "Oh, I'd love to have a, you know, a condo or a multifamily product here, or be able to have an office over there." It's really a teaser, a great way to bring the people from the outside in, but also the dining experience. Another component, this... Oops, I did that. I knew I would do this wrong. This area here is just a sample for a hotel site. We're still working on the concept for that. But typically, you're going to have, bringing that hotel product is also another great experience, because you can have all types of events and having that capability of having the rooms. Weddings are huge ask for a lot of our lagoon sites. Our two-acre lagoon in Houston right now, they actually are private amenity, but they're able to get, through their HOA Association, rent out the venue for events. And they've been open less than a year and have had over 20 weddings right now. So, they're killing it. I mean, you have, you see the pictures of the weddings at this, and you think they're in the Caribbean somewhere. You don't know that they're in the middle of Houston. So, having a hotel product is great there to be able to support having events, corporate events. Birthday parties are huge. I mean, you wouldn't, I mean, just all different types of events that you can cater to different demographics depending on the community. You'll see here this amphitheater, and that's important, too, because you also want to have that activation, like I said. And when there are times of the year where the water's just too cold to get into, you need to have different types of activities to still keep the area activated. So, you can have an amphitheater to have either local concerts, local events. The school could do performances there. And if there is a demand for it in that market, you could do bigger-name concerts that could come into that venue. And so, we program depending on what the demand is for that area. But it's even great just for local events and the community to be able to rent that out, and you could have tickets to come in at night and use that amphitheater. A lot of times, we have very different than a water park, because we don't just cater to the families and kids. We love to create different zones and activities for all different age groups. Families are always big, so we always typically have a family beach with a little splash pad for kids, areas for the kids to be active and play, pay-to-play sports, whether that's, you know, your kayaks, your paddle boards, or other kind of sailboats that you can do, because our lagoon is so large. But then you, this is a perfect example exactly. You can see, so this is our lagoon in Tampa, one of my favorites. This is also Tampa. This is one of their grand opening event. They had the flyboarders on the jetpacks there. But you also create zones, which you can see in the top right. There's this cabana area, this like swim-up cove. That's a complete adult zone. They have Super Bowl parties there. They have, there's a bar in there, so you have that a little further away than the family zone. So, you have two different areas, and you can cater to different crowds and different types of events and people. That way, it's not just the children or just the families. You can really cater to different types of demographics that's in your development. Yeah.
How big is that lagoon?
That lagoon is about seven and a half acres. That's in a masterplan community. That was actually our first lagoon in the US, and actually, my favorite. We actually mimicked this design after that design. It's one of my favorite. They only have roughly about 35% to 40% of their lagoon currently programmed out. They'll program the rest as the development grows. It's about 40 minutes outside of Tampa proper, and so, it's in the middle of farmland. So, they have a couple of years to grow into their product. They're selling single-family homes. They've actually accelerated their multifamily product up three years, because now they have a higher demand for that density, which they never thought they'd have so soon. And then eventually, a couple of years down the road, they'll have additional, they're working on putting a restaurant in right now, because they realize they need somewhere to service, you know, the F and B to serve their clients in there. That's a huge moneymaker for the developers. Everybody needs food and drink, obviously, when you're in these destinations. And you can see even in the middle here, there's a little stage area, covered area. There's a stage right here, and so, they do events and concerts in that area.
So, is that all?
So is that all private?
So, yeah, this is interesting. This was actually made as a private amenity for this master plan community. And being our first in the US, this is where I literally was getting emails on, because they got so much free publicity, because it was the first. The local TV stations were doing flyovers, because it's, once you get the water and our, you know, construction down, it's just a massive construction. And it's beautiful. And we were getting calls and emails from people all over the state saying, "Hey, I'm coming to Florida with my family from New Jersey. What does it cost to get in there?" Or, "I wanna have a wedding there." And then that, that was about three years ago. And that's when we started looking into the public access model. And said, "We have something here." You know, if people wanna pay to use this amenity, why wouldn't we allow them? And then we showed the developer the numbers, and he said, "Yeah, that's, of course, I want that money." Why would I turn that down? And again, it's such a large body of water. It doesn't matter. You're not on top of anyone. I mean, they have, when they opened this in April of last year, they were getting, on the summer weekends, twenty-five hundred people a day. And that was only on thirty-five percent of the lagoon. So it's just such a big area that you really just spread out. So this particular developer in Tampa, Florida, it's called Metro Development Group. We now have nine lagoon contracts with them. They created an entire division of their company called Metro Lagoons. And so all he does now is build mixed-use developments or master plan communities with these lagoons, and he opens it to the public. So he's, it's definitely a great success story. But by far, my favorite design, which we kind of mimicked this design here from as well.
So as far as the multifamily component being a part of a public access like that, if there were that many people, would that not be a detractor for people wanting to buy a condo or whatever there is?
Oh, wait, no, the concept plan. You would think so. I get that question a lot, and the same question for the hotel. So what we do is typically, for the hotel, you can see here in the upper right, I pointed out a minute ago. We create a private beach for that hotel user. And that hotel guest will have some sort of armband or some sort of fob, where they can get out of their hotel property and go into the public access, because they're gonna pay to be able to use the rest of the sports and go to the bar, the smoke bar, the island. And, but the rest of the public access users won't be able to get into the hotel product. So depending on the multifamily, we do something similar. We can create a private beach for them as well. But we have found that most of the time, people wanna be around other people. So you can create concierge services for your residents. That way, they get first right on cabanas, and they get premium F and B services and discounts for certain pay-to-play sports. So you can cater to your residents and still allow them to have access to the entire lagoon. You don't wanna segregate that, per se. Hotel's a little different, because a lot of times, they do more private, smaller events and say, they want to have a spa maybe, and so they need more of a private area. But we're really seeing that most of my multifamily developers want their residents to have free access of that entire, because the fun stuff is everywhere else, not just on their little beach, so. Let's see, what else can I go in through? A lot of different programming. It's important that, like I said, we do programming. We help educate the developers and the management companies on the different activities that you can use throughout and be able to program. So you can have morning, day, and nights. You know, right now, on a couple of our, our lagoon in Houston, Texas, and the, there's one more in Jacksonville. They do senior swim classes at six o'clock in the morning, and they even allow the community to come in in the morning and use the lagoon before it really opens to everybody else. They do swim classes. We have some developers scheduling triathlons, so they can use the lagoon now for the water portion of it. We have the twelve acre lagoon in Texas City that's under construction right now. They're doing sailboat exercises and sailboat training down there. So there's so many fun, different types of programming. We have zip lines on some of our lagoons. We have all different types of, obviously, yoga and other, beach volleyball that you can schedule during, you know, cold winter months. There's numerous amounts of types of activities that you can plan and really kind of incorporate all kinds of fun activities year-round for the community and the residents. And having that diversity really is what's important. It's not like you're in just a single-family community where that lagoon is only gonna be used on the weekends and the rest of the week is just dead and no one's there. Like, it really becomes a vibrant venue for people to come in and see activity. I have clients right now looking at doing laser shows at night on the water, projections on like water curtains and stuff on our lagoon. So you can have a bit of entertainment for the retail boardwalk area at night. You can do the shows, and you can create Christmas shows around that. And that's pretty affordable, even without, I have a six acre lagoon going in in Rowlett with the city, it's a P three deal with the city there. And they have a huge fountain in the middle of it. The fountain alone, I think, is like over twenty million. It's massive. And they have this amazing water fountain show that they really wanna program, because it's a very heavy commercial retail center, that they wanna do programmable events at night. But you can do a lot more affordable, like water curtain laser shows that you can, you know, program at night on our water. You wanna be able to light up that water at night. Obviously, during the daytime, our lagoons are that beautiful blue Caribbean color that stays that way. And the reason everyone always asks is our, do we dye our lagoon blue? We don't, we don't dye it blue. It's actually white, no different than in the Caribbean, because in the Caribbean, you have white sand. So blue is the color that gets absorbed last. So the deeper your water gets, the darker that blue goes. So most of our lagoons are between eight to nine feet, unless you need a depth for some other kind of play sport. So that's where you get your really pretty turquoise blue in our white liner, which is the floor of our lagoon.
Quick question. Are all of your properties managed by a single entity, or are they?
They're all different. They're all different, and it's up to the developer to choose that type of management company. And we make, you know, we can do recommendations and referrals of people that understand our product and that we've spoken to. But it's a choice of the developer who they pick.
Okay, so the activities are just sort of a broad idea, not promised?
Yeah, so we work hand-in-hand with the developer, and we say, "Here are kind of some base programming that makes sense for all locations." But then I have some locations that may have, want to do more water sports. I have some locations that may have a really heavy demographic for a certain age of children, and we might do more pay-to-play sports for that age group of children. I have some, I have another lagoon right now that wants to do almost an amusement boardwalk alongside of, with a little small Ferris wheel and things like that. So it just depends on the vision plan for each development, what goes in each one. But we sit down and we help educate them on what the revenue model is and try to really maximize and share our experience with them, so they can eventually find a management company that makes sense for that development.
So when, what is the interest from hotels? I mean, look at Dallas-Fort Worth, and you've got Gaylord, and you've got Great Wolf, and you've got these massive hotels around entertainment. I'm surprised that nobody's kind of partnered with you to be the hotel of choice.
Yes and no. I mean, we've had a lot of discussions with a lot of different hotel flags out there. We have, we've been in a lot of discussions with Margaritaville, because obviously, their brand and vision is very similar to what we are doing. So we have some projects with Margaritaville, might be coming in on some different sites. We have, they, I don't think Rowlett has announced there. They have a conference center that's going in, four hundred room, in that project. And they do have a flag, but they're not gonna announce that until January. So it just really depends on the location. A lot of my sites are boutique hotels, hundred to hundred and twenty rooms. Some actually go conference style, if that is the need for that area. So that's a different type of flag usually. But really, it's site to site's very different. But we have had a lot of discussions with hotels. And like I said, out of my mixed-use projects that I have, almost all of them have some sort of hotel coming in on them. But we're new. We're very new to the States, and so, but a lot of hotels are very excited to work with us.
And we plan to have one.
Yes.
Or two.
Yeah. And you can do some really cool stuff, because you can take a typical hotel chain. When you put it on our lagoon, it's like putting a hotel on an ocean. So they become a resort, and you're able to charge resort fees and be able to have that resort amenity for that hotel. And sometimes, we can change the product up a little bit and do little casitas and villas on the edge of the lagoon. So it's not just a typical hotel room, where obviously, you look out and have beautiful views. But we're able to actually create some different concepts for those hotels and create lagoon-sized little casitas that you can, they can rent out as well. I think I've flown through a lot of this. I'll sit here and talk all day, but I think you guys have got the gist of kind of the big picture of what we're doing. If you guys wanna step in, and if you guys have any more questions for me?
I mean, lagoon is lagoon, and it's going to be surrounded by, of course, all of the amenities. And we want it to be as inviting, to your point. It's, it's a promise, but it's a promise that we intend to keep, because you build this, but if you don't have the amenities, people are not just going to come here to swim, right? So, but in addition to that, what is going to happen surrounding this area? One of the visions that me and my developers have is lagoon. And there's all this development, but also create a very cohesive environment that gathers people, that brings people together. So I'm gonna pass on to Tim to talk about it.
Yeah, the developers, Island, recognize that Leander is a vibrant, growing community. And in addition to being a place to visit, this will be a great place to live. And we wanna get a critical mass of people who will live here, you know, twenty-four, seven, year-round, in addition to the many visitors that'll come to the lagoon. Part of that is to create a sense of community. You can't design people's behavior, but you can provide opportunities where people can get together and naturally feel the sense of a community. These are some images that we put together after having a visioning session with Island about the kinds of things that we would wanna include in this development. Some early preconceptions to establish the look and feel of the development as a whole. So, you know, the lagoon area is probably, you know, is four acres for the lagoon itself, and then maybe another fifteen acres around it. And so then there's still, this is a seventy-seven acre tract, so how do we make that work for us? Well, let's just go through some of the, there we go. One of the things that we're looking at is, you know, adding a critical mass of density here with multifamily buildings that are integrated with workplaces and retail and are also recognizing an opportunity for commercial development year-round. I would imagine you guys may have come across articles in Forbes and the New York Times to talk about hipsterbia, this whole phenomenon of aging millennials that are moving to perimeter communities of urban areas. And they want to have some of the amenities and the look and feel of what they're used to. So this is.
I'm afraid to say if I're there or not, you know.
It made everybody smile, so that's all I can say.
So we certainly wanna create the opportunity for, you know, restaurants and shops that would attract that particular demographic and the families that come along with it as well.
Could we go to your site plan, the big site plan?
Does this, this might help.
Yeah.
I think that's what you're referring to.
More laid out. Yeah.
This goes beyond, you see the, what Lisa showed you is in the center, the lagoon and the amenities. What we decided to do is, just to get our hands around this large tract of land, is to employ a strategy or a methodology from traditional town planning and to break up the site into blocks that are roughly two and a half to three acres in size. And that helped us organize what types of project, product would go around the lagoon development. And so these are just some initial assumptions. It's kind of our first pass at a concept on how we would kind of overall organize this land. So how do I get the actual?
At the top, right?
The laser?
On the pointer?
Yeah, the pointer, okay. So the, we're, an obvious opportunity is to take advantage of the frontage on one eighty-three A and use retail there at the entrance to the site. It'll be retail that could serve both the residential and the lagoon, and then also have street traffic from the southbound Air Force Road. Then we have several housing opportunities. We're thinking of a residential wrap, which is a higher-density, six to eight stories with a parking structure in the middle of the block, and then a courtyard also in the middle of the block, and then the units are actually on the perimeter. Then over here on this side, we're bringing the scale down a little bit. We, our capital market research has coined a term called the gerban, which is a garden-urban apartment. So it's about four-story with an elevator, but has surface parking in the center of the block. Is kind of the general approach there. So again, still reinforcing these kind of circulation routes that we've set up through the, throughout the site. And then the, as Lisa mentioned, there are all kinds of different retail opportunities that you could have that serve both the lagoon, but also could be part of a retail street that will go through the site. And again, create more opportunity for restaurants, shops, professional offices, things of that nature. And then, in addition to that, we are looking at some kind of commercial development as well. Office, possibly any number of different things. But we're thinking, you know, this would be great for a multi-tenant office or corporate campus or something like that, with this kind of visibility. We see the Creeks Mason and Brushy as amenities as well. Some of the images we showed you talk about really investing in the landscape to make those another kind of, kind of background type of amenity. We understand that you're developing a pathway that's within biking and walking distance to the metro stop. We think that'll be a great amenity and a great thing to support the residential development in this community. So all in all, it's a place you can live, you can work, and you can play and shop. All in one place, you know, in an ideal, for some people, if they're fortunate, they could park their car on Friday night and not have to use it until Monday morning.
So the public access area I see you have on the far west side of the property?
Oh, the, the street along the west side?
On the lagoon itself, the public access. So how would you actually get?
Yeah, that hasn't really been completely defined yet, just because we're really working from a bubble drawing right now. So the next steps are to get together and really hone in on the placement of the assets, how we program the lagoon and the public access, the entrance points, where the amphitheater go. We're very particular about what things face. You know, west facing beaches and things like that. So we needed to see kind of where the buildings are and which type of assets. Where the hotels will go, how many hotels will there be, before we really start defining the programming of the lagoon. The concept that we showed you earlier was just kind of a sample concept of what could be there. But once we really define more, the developer defines more of what those assets are, then I can go in and refine the programming of the lagoon.
And we're gonna be going back and forth and just talking about the whole user experience, whether you're living in a gerban or a resi wrap, or if you're shopping, or if you work in an office building. How do you get from one place to the other? And how do you really leverage all the things that the lagoon offers for this community?
So how do you estimate the capacity on a four acre versus what you've got in Rowlett?
It's a great question. I mean, we have the four acre as a placeholder right now, and we just had this conversation earlier today. Once we define kind of the assets and what they are, that helps me kind of educate them on what size of a lagoon I need. I go in and start programming the beach space, green space, and that's really your capacity, your seating, right? Like, compare it to a stadium. You can only get so many people in the door that you have seats for to sell. So our capacity in the lagoon is your beach, is your green space. That's where you have chairs and where people lay out. So we do some square footage analysis, and we have a formula that goes with each area. And then I can say, "Okay, on a busy summer afternoon, we can, you know, you know, fit two thousand people in this lagoon, or we can fit twenty-five hundred people in this lagoon." Whatever that number is, is dictated really by, one, the land we have available, and two, the assets that we program around that lagoon. So it's kind of a, just a collaboration between all the team members to decide that.
Well, thank you, guys. We're bumping up against our regular meeting. But thank you so much. It's awesome, and it would be quite the amenity for Leander, so.
We are available to answer questions or, you know, need or, of course, address, I think, your most important, what does it mean and everything. But it'll come, and Capital Market Research has contributed a lot to the numbers. The projections are also coming from proper research and everything.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes, the numbers.
Yes.
Yes, you do, yes, you do. So the numbers are coming from proper market research, and it has been a collaboration between different entities as well. I do wanna say, we did take a page from your book. Evan was very hopeful, but this makes us when it comes to Leander. So it is the happening place.
It is.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Because we're planning all this stuff based on the density. And so we kind of wanted to get engaged and get feedback from you guys in terms of multifamily components and the whole, are we going too much? Or is it something that you would support in terms of?
You haven't told us how many units.
That was the, the slide before, but we're talking about nineteen hundred apartments. We're talking about 500 rooms hotel and we're talking about-
What would happen to 1,200?
That was all planned.
That was when they had the eight-acre.
And we're talking about over 1.2 million square feet in commercial.
I would be more comfortable with the 1,200 personally.
I'm more concerned about the timing of the commercial versus the multifamily.
Convert that to density per acre. How many apartment units would that be?
We have kind of two different products. One is the surface parking and we have, that would be around 38 units per acre. And the one more dense wrap product, we're talking about 60 units per acre.
I would encourage you all to go back and watch the video of when the last one of these came to us, because there was a lot of discussion on the dais about the density. And I think a lot of the concerns could be addressed with that.
Okay. As of now, just in overall, because it's 77 acres, just big board's eye view is half of it is about residential, half of it is about commercial.
Except, yeah. My concern is you only have, I don't know, 20% of the frontage of the lagoon for retail.
The whole side, the red dotted line is also retail.
But it doesn't from the lagoon.
It does.
It does.
No, I know I see that, but from your close-up drawing, you've got that wrapped with-
Oh, the close-up drawing is just what will be the amenities that were recommended. That is a completely individual suggestion. That's what's going to be put there first and then everything else. So, this big block is all lagoon and that concept plan just shows this and something that's touching it.
Okay.
So, they're not mere pictures kind of thing.
Oh, got it.
They're just very in isolation. That was just to show lagoon.
The periphery of the lagoon.
That's it. But this entire thing is to be considered lagoon and amenities and hotel area and other things.
So, that picture that you saw, that's kind of zooming on nine acres?
Right.
Where that block is 17 acres.
Okay.
Kind of double.
Okay. Because it looked like there was just, the tip of it had the restaurants and everything else was kind of blocked by-
It just hadn't been programmed yet. Like, when I had that design, I didn't have their density or what products they were putting in. So, I just really focused on a little bit of retail and what I knew.
TBD. The time-
We're very excited.
We're going to adjourn for three minutes. Thank you. For the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag, honor the Texas flag. The pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Pastor. I appreciate that. So, at this time, we're going to do a roll call. Mrs. Crabtree.
Councilmember Catherine Battalion Parker.
Here.
Councilmember Michelle Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Jason Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Christine Sederquist.
Here.
Mayor Protem Chris Ernik.
Here.
Councilmember Marcy Cannon.
Here.
Mayor Prote, I'm sorry, Mayor Troy Hill. I'm sorry.
Here. And we do have a quorum, so we can proceed at this time. We'll go to number eight, public comments. We do not have anybody signed up. Oh, just kidding. And so, we're going to go to nine. We're going to have a presentation. Chief Worcester Houson, if you come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have Paul Ure with the NOAA Weather Services and he's got a presentation for us this evening.
Good evening. Name is Paul Ure with the National Weather Service Office down in New Braunfels, Texas. There is a recognition program within the National Weather Service called Storm Ready. It started a couple of decades ago, actually in Oklahoma, where the local Weather Service Office wanted to be able to recognize cities and counties that kind of went above and beyond in their weather preparedness. Kind of a way to reward them in a way for all the good work and proactiveness that they kind of do. So, that has kind of spread across the country now to where now cities, counties, universities, larger entity groups can become storm-ready. So, what's been happening over the past year or so, I guess it was, been getting with chief and workers from the Office of Emergency Management here in Leander, going through the storm-ready process. What that basically means is that there's an application. Of course, 90% of the presidentially declared disasters are all typically weather-related. So, obviously, being prepared for weather is very, very important. So, through the application process, the city has proven that they have ways of getting the Weather Service warnings, they have ways of monitoring weather, and then they also then have ways of disseminating out those warnings to the general public and to also the employees of Leander. And of course, storm-ready doesn't mean storm-proof. We all kind of know that. We've had some pretty active weather in Leander and Cedar Park area, all up this area the last couple of years, tornadoes, et cetera. But it does mean that you guys are prepared more than the typical place, and that's kind of a very good thing. And so, with that, I'll let Emergency Management kind of talk a little bit about the process real quick and then we'll show you the fancy sign that you guys get.
So, again, thank you for taking the time to recognize this. Staff has put in a lot of time, energy, and effort to be able to achieve this accomplishment. And just want to make sure that we kind of reiterate, it doesn't make us storm-proof, but it does put us in the best position to be able to prepare for and respond to weather-related incidents. So, we thank you for the time today and for this recognition.
Appreciate it. And so, it is a three-year recognition. So, after three years, we revisit the application, do some planning changes to make sure that everything is still going the way it's supposed to be doing, and then have even some trainings in between those years in order to kind of keep everybody fresh, new employees coming in, et cetera, making sure that everything is going the way it should be like that. So, you get a nice certificate as well as a nice storm-ready sign that you guys can put wherever you want to put it. We're going to have a photo op and that way, there's a national webpage that we're going to be able to put this photo on. Where do you want it?
Right here in this guy.
Okay.
Put it at the lagoon.
Mayor, you'll stand in the middle with our National Weather Service rep. And she'll flank him down, flank him. Yep. The sign is reflective, so we'll have to be careful of the sign if it's something- While I pull that, why don't you join me on the sign? There you go. All right. Eric and Katie, just like that. Can you just step up a little bit there? Thank you. I will get in all your business. Okay, here we go. One, two, three. Check that? Okay, there we go. One, two, three. Okay, thank you. We're going to get one for every time we talk. Appreciate it.
All right. At this time, we're going to move to staff reports. Mr. Watts.
All right, let's see. Where's the, my mic has to click here. My mic's clicking for me. All right, so we have 25 sets of public improvement construction plans. Public improvements are, improvements that are dedicated to the city. Well, as far as public improvement projects under construction, we have 60-plus. Now, there's not 60 line items up there, but you'll look, say, like bluffs at the third line item. We've got, there's four separate sections under construction there, so. Same thing for Deerbrook, over on the far right, same thing for Bryson in the, in the first column. But there's 60-plus projects that are under construction as we speak. Our site development projects, the engineering staff is currently reviewing 22 site development plan sets. As far as site development projects under construction, there are 36 currently under construction. We have our capital improvements projects. Baghdad Road North roadway improvements are substantially complete. We are waiting to, one day, hopefully, we can get ahead of the people that keep knocking down our streetlight poles. We had somebody hit one, it must have hit it at 45 or 50 miles an hour. There were no brakes before or after the impact and pulled out about 800 feet of our conductor. So, we're in the process of replacing that so we can eventually get some streetlights on our new five-lane section of Baghdad. The Brushy Streetscape improvements are substantially complete. Our contractor has been working feverishly to eliminate the glitches in the streetlight and the electrical system associated with the streetlights, the various and sundry plug-ins, outlets on the poles and ground-mounted. All of that is in operation except for two primary streetlights there at the corner of Willis, there in front of the Beer Market, and then right there at the Chamber. Those streetlights, those two lights were out yesterday. They supposedly repaired them today. I've already notified them that they need to be repaired first thing in the morning. The East Street project is, we have 95% plans. We are, that project is basically on hold pending FEMA's approval of our conditional letter of map revision. Once that's approved, we will begin the process of appraisal of the parcel that we need to acquire and then begin the acquisition activities as we finalize the East Street plans. Coffin elevated storage tank substantially complete. Right now, we are seeking quotes for some electrical connections to get the, get electricity into the site and mainly to be able to illuminate the, the tank and the logo. That'll be our only illuminated tank, but it'd be basically a signpost saying, "Leander, here we are." Metro Drive project is well under construction. Bridge beams have been set. They're setting the panels as currently. The Right-Away Woodview project, we have right-away acquisition underway. Matter of fact, we'll be considering some of that tonight in executive session. The San Gabriel project, Phase 1 construction continues as we speak. Phase 2A and 2B are at approximately 90% completion. We will have additional acquisitions to identify, appraise, and begin once those plans are finalized for phases 2A and 2B. Mike, note that you see quiet zone. That's, that's not our project. That's a Cap Metro project quiet zone for Metro Drive and San Gabriel Parkway. They, they had a bid opening on November the 22nd. Nobody submitted bids. So, they're going to take another run at it. Hopefully, we'll, they'll get some bids. Any questions, Council?
I do. What does that mean, that they had a bid out on the quiet zone?
Well, they, they had their plans and specs out for, for bid, to receive bid proposals, competitive sale bid proposals. They had, they had a, a pre-bid conference and meeting with people on-site and people in their office discussing the project. They had, I believe they told me they had had 12 participants that picked up plans, but nobody submitted a bid.
Can you refresh my memory of what needs to be done to make it a quiet zone? It's a construction project?
It's, it's a construction project, yes, ma'am. And it also includes some additional gates, includes some additional extensions of medians and things like that to prevent people from driving around or through gates as they're in the process of closing.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Wayne, on some of these streets like Metro Drive, did we ever look at federal dollars, federal transportation dollars at all?
No, sir.
Because I know that our new city manager, Rick Beverland, by the way. We were having a conversation and there was some talk about federal dollars and projects like this that are associated with mass transit.
Yes, sir.
So, I don't know if that's something, Rick, that's too late since we're in the middle of building it, that we could potentially access or?
Well, we, Rick participated in our meeting with Northline People today. We had that discussion. We're really too late for the current Phase 1, but there are many opportunities thereafter that we can take advantage of that process.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I got, wait, wait. I was sitting every try and everybody kept, these poles that keep getting hit, they keep getting hit during the day or night?
Middle of the night. I think it's possibly alcohol involved.
So, if there was some way to illuminate these poles by a light or something, would this maybe stop?
Well, maybe once the lights are turned on, we might have a better chance of doing that, so. The, the poles will, basically, you know, the, the luminaire, the head is going to illuminate the pole and when, maybe when they can see it in all the dark at 2:00 in the morning when they're trying to get back to Liberty Hill without getting caught.
That's kind of what I'm getting at, if they would turn the lights on. Also, I mean, this may keep happening because they're sitting right on the street, right? Is that normal for light poles to be like?
It, it is. I mean, they need to be two feet behind the curb. That's considered the safe clear zone. I might note that we don't have that necessarily in every place in town because we had some private, privately installed streetlights on Treviso Parkway in particular. Too close to the curb to suit me, but can't be relocated.
Well, you might want to relay to them, turn the lights on and they might have to stop refixing these poles. Who's paying for these poles getting refixed?
We are.
I think that somebody out there hit a pole too, if I'm not mistaken, Treviso Parkway.
I wouldn't be a bit surprised.
See if we can't get his lights turned on.
Long as it's not my kids, that's all I can-
Do the poles have reflectors on them?
No, ma'am. Generally, they don't, you know, right now with no power on it, maybe that would help. But, you know, typically, typically, we don't have this situation. I might note that, you know, we had, with Hero Way, we didn't have that happen, but that's also not a late-night route home for certain folks.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we're going to move to our, God, this microphone, does this microphone seem really loud? Yeah. At this time, we're going to move to our consent agenda.
Mayor, we have Parks and Rec reporting.
Oh, sorry. Why do I always forget you? Why?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Good evening. Just a few programs that's coming up this month, I wanted to draw your attention to. Youth basketball started this past week, one of those things that we started last year in 2018. This is our second year. We actually over-doubled the number of our participants in youth basketball. We went from 95 to almost 200 at 193 this year. And then, so that's, that's cool and we got basketball games beginning in January. We also have this Parks and Recreation Night at Austin Spurs tomorrow evening, 7:30 PM. Tickets are $15. A portion of the proceeds will go to help our Leander Little League. So, if you'd like tickets, go to the Parks and Recreation website and you'll get more information, be able to click on there and go right to picking up tickets. And then the big one, what everybody's sort of waiting for, the Saturday night, Saturday afternoon, and daytime, Leander Christmas Festival and Parade. Bridget left, but I told her I had it on my report, so I wanted to share it. Festival opens at 11:00 in the morning with the Rudolph Run, the 5K. Marketplace also opens at that time. We have the HEB Snow Globe, which is new for this year. Council Parade Reception begins at 4:00 and then you'll be able to judge the floats at 4:30. The parade begins at 6 with the lighted, the lighted parade and the tree lighting at 7:30. So, it's going to be an awesome day, beautiful weather. Come out and join us. Hopefully, everyone does. You bring family and neighbors and we'll just have a great time together because that's what we're, what we're here for. I listed a lot of active adults. I'm not going to go through all of their trips and, but it's there for your review. But there are some really cool things happening for our 50-plus members of our community. December 14th, Pancakes and PJs at the, it's hosted by the Parks and Recreation Department. We're going to be using the Leander Library Annex Room. It's $5 per child. You get all the pancakes and bacon that you want, and then your parents are free, so they get breakfast too. So, and I, I hear there's going to be some special guests that will show up as well.
Do the parents have to show up in PJs to get the free breakfast?
I'm sorry?
Do the parents have to show up in PJs to get the free breakfast?
Probably not, no. I would, I would hope not. But the kids can, obviously. And then the last thing, December 20th, Movies in the Park, right here at the Old Town Leander Stage. We're showing The Grinch, is the Dr. Seuss one that came out in 2018. This is not the Jim Carrey Dr. Seuss. So, I also understand that we might have some smores available for people to make, so. And then there's a couple of other things on there. I won't take the labor too long, but the Basketball Clinic and, of course, our adult kickball and flag football are coming to a close for our fall season. to a close for our fall season. The last thing I want to draw your attention to is something very cool that you helped us with, and I certainly appreciate that. We've invested in some new registration software called CivicRec. It's specifically built. CivicRec is a company that builds these specifically for local governments so we can grow our memberships, participants, we can grow activities, but it allows us really to engage our community more effectively. It's cloud-based software, which is really cool. Public can use this platform to register for programs, renting a facility, being a vendor, or even a volunteer. And it's very easy to use, minimal stress, ensures accurate activity registration and membership management, which we hope to take advantage of. And of course, point of sale and online registration and online payments are very easy, and you can do it from your mobile phone or laptop or whatever else, wherever you'd like to be. So we know the citizens' expectations are continuing on the rise, and this is just one of the ways that we're helping to meet that demand. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. All right, now, we're gonna move to our consent agenda. This is an action item.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval, all in favor. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, at this time, we're gonna move to our regular agenda, item fifteen. We're gonna discuss and consider action on the second reading of an ordinance regarding zoning case nineteen-z-zero-two-zero to amend the current zoning to LC Two A, Local Commercial, as stated on the posted agenda. Script it.
This is the second reading of the zoning request, and I'm available for any questions.
All right.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? All right, passes unanimously. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Raise your hand. All right. All opposed?
That's why I'm not gonna argue, I know I'm not gonna win.
All right. Motion passes six to one. All right, sixteen, discuss and consider action on a resolution amending the City of Leander personnel policy to adjust holiday leave benefits for certain fire and police employees. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I'm up here instead of Ms. Hignight because this item, as much as anything, affects payroll. So normally, I leave employee issues to HR, and I like money, but I kinda got this one. So a little bit of background, in 2014, the city management, city staff brought forward a number of personnel policy changes to the city's personnel policy. Some of those included reducing the number of city holidays by three, so three holidays that used to be holidays were taken off the approved list. Another change that was made was that up until that time in 2014, because of staffing and the police and fire departments and the lack of staffing, police patrol and firefighters were just paid for the holiday because there was never an opportunity to schedule them to take the time off. So it either sat on the books or didn't get used or got lost. So up until that point, the city just paid those employees for that time. So one of the changes that was made in 2014 was to discontinue that practice of paying for those hours and treating police patrol and firefighters working shifts as other city employees. Basically, you accrue the holiday and then you take it either on that day if your shift allows, which most regular employees, you know, city halls closed, so I don't have to come to work, but that hadn't worked for patrol and firefighters. So they would have to schedule their days off sometime during the year. So that's a little background. The other thing that is specific to tonight is the other change that was made in 2014 was, prior to that time, police patrol officers who worked twelve-hour shifts and firefighters that work in a station, they worked twenty-four-hour shifts, they used to get twelve hours for a city holiday. You know, the rest of us that work eight to five, we get eight hours, and they used to get twelve hours for a holiday. The change made in 2014 was to make it uniform, citywide, everyone got eight hours for the Fourth of July, Christmas, all those city holidays. So that's a little background. With the arrival of Chief Woosterhausen, he's taken a fresh set of eyes to a lot of the things that we, policies and practices that affect the fire department, and has brought forward suggestions on making some changes to be more in conformance with what he's familiar with and what's more normal in the area. And so this was one of the ones that was brought up for discussion. Kind of fast-forward to me. The reason this is a payroll issue is, the other thing that Chief Woosterhausen had brought to our attention for consideration is the concept of a holiday bank where firefighters and also police officers would have their holidays put in a bank on January one. Bank is just a term, you know, computer bank. And then management could schedule those employees off for the rest of the year so they could take their holidays, as opposed to waiting until that actual holiday rolled around and then having a scheduling issue. So that was attractive to me in payroll because our current practice since 2014 is pretty labor-intensive because everyone accrues the holiday that comes during that pay period, but police officers that work shift and firefighters that work shift, they never can take it, so it accrues into their vacation, that's a manual administrative process. And then if they don't take it at a certain time, it rolls into vacation, and then at some point, in our policy, we cap how much vacation you accrue. So it would make payroll's life easier to have this holiday bank. So I'm all in favor of the holiday bank concept. So that's how we got to this point. Timing-wise, if we could get it in place now, then when January one rolls around, the police and fire departments can utilize the bank concept and, you know, hopefully it provides a little more understandability to the policy. I forgot to mention that firefighters accrue vacation days as twelve-hour increments. So what's the difference between a vacation day and a holiday? One's twelve hours, one's eight. So a little bit of confusion there, so. We'd like to make this change now, get it rolling for the new year. It'd be effective now for the Christmas holidays, but the bank would start January one.
I would like to motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Is there any more discussion?
I just got one question about one of the red lines. I don't know, because I got kinda confused on this one. Why do you have to have an hour? To be, what says, holiday credit will be granted for employee who is, why do you have to have an hour? It's a holiday.
What section are you in? Are you talking about the active duty?
Yeah, it's...
You must be an active pay status?
It's the ones, it's a red line, and the change is approved in 2014, but it says, holiday pay credit will be granted for employee who is out on occupational injury, only if employee has at least one hour of combined leave.
It's on the last page.
Yes. So that change came about because of situations where if someone, what benefits do you continue to accrue if you're not at work? And we didn't have a definition of when do benefits stop accruing or put into suspense. And, you know, we are public employees, we do have some scrutiny that is appropriate, so, you know, there should be some controls that we can tell the taxpayers that, you know, if an employee is not coming to work, at some point, we don't continue the benefits for vacation and holidays.
But my concern is, it says occupational injury, which means it happened at work, right? So why aren't we making them, some people might have used that on sick or going to the doctor or something, right?
Well...
So they might be empty, so why are we gonna...
Well, the one hour is, all they have to do is leave one hour of vacation or sick time in the bank, so it's pretty minimal, and everyone has adjusted to that. But if an employee is on workers' comp, they are compensated under the workers' comp policy, and they don't lose their benefits. I mean, they don't lose their health insurance and others. So we had to have a definition of when to, and that was not part of what tonight is, but that was a change in the 2014 policy.
Yeah, okay. I mean, just personally, I'd like to see it zero, but if it's the law, it's the law, right?
Yeah.
If you gotta have rules.
And I will put a plug in for HR. Ms. Hignight has been working to overhaul the entire policy, all twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen chapters. It's a pretty big undertaking. That is one that is being reworked. As we live with these changes, we come up with things we didn't think about, so.
Okay.
Good input. Thank you.
I had a question. On the red line, back to the first page, I think it's pretty much the first line that is crossed out, the city council may add, change, or delete the official holidays following provision shall apply. Was that just unnecessary language because we can still add or change? Let's all say we come up with a new holiday, do we still have the right to grant it to the employees?
Absolutely. And this red line is a little unique because, as I alluded to, the overhaul of the policy, everything's being reformatted.
Okay.
So the red line is really, whatever was old is struck through, and then we have a new format. So what we tried to do tonight with this amendment is make it fit the format that we're going to.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You always have the right to change this policy at any time. It's a city council approved and has to come back to you for those changes.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor?
Thank you.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Powers, and thank you, Cindy, for all your hard work. You do a great job. All right, number seventeen, we're gonna discuss and consider action on authorizing as-built drawings on the Davis House along with conducting a survey of the property and the vacant lot next door. This would just authorize our city manager to negotiate with Mr. John for the survey of the house, which would be the first part of the process of moving forward with the house.
I have a question. On the, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it correctly, Antonora architectural bid that was approved in 2017 and paid for in finality in May of 2018, included in that bid and what we paid for as a city for the Davis House is a site survey and investigation of construction materials, as well as a site survey and external survey. So all I would just ask is that we've never seen those surveys, that we check into that before we redo work that we've already paid for. And I'll give you the line item bid and the invoices and all of that, I've got it.
And I know that, obviously, Tom's no longer here, and he was heavily involved in this project, but from a city standpoint, is there anybody you think that would?
There was not an official...
You can come on up, Kathy.
The work that Antonora did, there was not an actual survey completed for what we need to proceed forward. They did a general survey. The survey that we need now is one that includes all the meets and bounds, all the utilities, full-blown, here-we-go survey. What Antonora did was just basically, here is the area. So we're gonna have to get a new survey done. Walker, Texas Surveyor, is very, very familiar with this area, and they would be the person that most people around here would recommend to do that work, but the...
I think he had worked out a deal with the engineer that was here to do it at like half-cost or something.
When I met with Charles and Bill outside, they asked me to reiterate that...
Oh, did they?
Yeah, that they do not have a survey and that they would...
That's not what Bill does?
No.
Okay.
No, he's the actual architect that will do the as-built drawings.
Okay.
So a separate surveyor would need to be hired to do a actual survey, and it would have to include all the utilities and all the, everything that we need to proceed forward. Does that help?
Does.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else I can help with?
Thank you.
Just for discussion, I don't know that you know the answer to this, but we don't know what we're gonna do with it.
No, it's...
So this is just, do we need this to go forward to do anything?
Yeah, to do anything.
If we decide to just give it away, we still need this, and we have to do it.
Yeah, before, you know, whatever the process is, the good thing about going down this path, it's a small amount to the city versus spending untold amounts if it's all on us.
Yeah.
If there's a way to, again, whether it's the Chamber, whatever entity, or we create one, you know, that is a, you know, 501(c)(3), then the impact for the city is nothing, so...
David, did you have anything on that that you wanted to add?
Good evening, counsel, mayor. To answer your question, I think there is the option, we could do either OR, right?
So we could do nothing?
We could donate it to the, technically, we cannot donate it from what I understand, we have to go through a legal process of disposing of public property. So we have to follow that process. Now, whether we do the as-bills now as a city or we do let the 501(c)(3) do the as-bills, we could go either way.
So we do have that option of really doing nothing?
That's my understanding.
But if we donate it, then somebody still has to have the as-built drawing, so it's just a matter of, do we do it or does somebody else?
That's my understanding. And I don't think we can really use the word donate, we can't donate public land, so...
Unload in some technical term, whatever appropriate term there is.
Don't use demolish, don't use that.
No, no, no.
You don't like that word?
Never use that, no. No, you're gonna give her a heart attack.
Did I wake you up? Were you asleep?
You have that option. It's that option. Now, it would give us a good basis for a value judgment to have those as-bills, in my understanding.
So we could actually, and I'm just reading this, find out how much it's gonna cost to do that before we decide to do it.
Well, that's what Rick's gonna do.
Perfect, okay. I'm just trying to get the big picture. Okay, thank you, David.
So with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Hey, to clarify, we are discussing both as-bills and the surveys with your motion. Mr. Shaw, is that correct?
That is correct.
Correct.
I have a question. There's no supporting documents. What is, I mean, I know you said Rick's going to come up with the cost, but this is authorizing it to be done. It's not authorizing it to come back with a cost. Do we have a ballpark?
I can give you a ballpark based on the bid and invoice that we already paid for the site survey and investigation of construction materials, $660. Site survey and external survey, $605. Those were the big numbers. There was several hundred in travel costs, et cetera. There was, we even paid for models to be done in sketch-up of potential development phases. We paid $300 for that. But I'll go over that. But we're talking about a nominal amount of money. If we don't have it, we're authorizing the city manager to go get it. And anything, the city manager can sign for anything under $50,000 without coming before us.
I mean, ultimately, he found somebody, as far as the architectural drawings, the as-bills, to do it for like cost, just because he's in Old Town and wants to help out. So I think it's a pretty nominal amount. We're getting a really good deal.
Yes. So just to echo what Councilmember Stevenson said, that was my concern on it, was because it doesn't need to come in front of us if it's a low cost. So, yes, thank you.
Yeah, this was really just because our city manager's new, so, you know.
And did you want me to just come back informationally, give you all an update where we're at?
Yeah.
I think that'd be good, after we pull, go all the way back to the 17 information forward.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? All right, motion passes six to one. All right, we're going to move to item 18. We're going to convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551-072, Texas Government Code to deliberate the granting of a special warranty deed dedication of right-of-way acquisition of sidewalk easement and public utility easement, and a public utility easement from Manib Malim. That scared me for a minute. Located in the Elijah Harmon Survey, Abstract 6, the City of Leander, Williamson County, Texas, for the Right-of-Way East Woodview Roadway Project. The time is 7:47. All right, the time is 8:22, and the city council is now going to reconvene and open session. To take any action is deemed appropriate in the city council's discretion. Mayor Protem, do you have a motion?
Take no action.
All right. We're going to take no action. So we're going to move to item 19, closing comments.
Oh, dang it.
Not a good sign. All right, thank you, Ms. Parkers.
Oh, yes, thank you. So today, December 5, is National Repeal Day, commemorating the formal repeal of the 18th Amendment on December 5, 1933. Once again, Americans were free to buy, sell, and consume alcohol. However, it was 30 years ago this month that I gave up my rights to consume alcohol. I've been, have not been able to sing or dance since. So I just want to give a big welcome to our new city manager, Rick Beverlin. We are delighted to have him here and excited about our future together. Lastly, just another reminder, I know we talked about it earlier, that I'm looking forward to seeing everyone at the Old Town Christmas Festival on Saturday, starting at 11:00, the parade at 6:00, and followed by the Christmas tree lighting. And that's all. Merry Christmas. Well, no, we still have one more meeting, so never mind.
Okay. Okay. I was so excited to be out there. I was in the foyer just before the meeting started, and to find out that we were getting this storm-ready award. And I just, I just thought about it. I said, you know, that didn't come instantly, just like this. That was years of preparation. And I want to give Bill Gardner, our former chief, a big shout-out, because he was focused like a laser beam on making sure that we were prepared in all ways. And this is the results of it. We won an award, and I want to congratulate him for that, in leading our fire department in accomplishing that. And I also want to thank Rick Beverlin for coming, and a big welcome.
I don't know if I'm allowed to say anything, but thank you all to the entire council and the community. Extremely humbled to be here and do my best to serve you all every day, and serve the staff. And I don't think could have a better staff. Been as lucky and inherited staff as dedicated and good-hearted as this one. Thank you.
So I want to thank everybody for coming. As soon as the mayor bangs that gavel, if we could clear out the chambers, that way staff and our police officers don't have to stay here. We'll go outside and talk. We'll all run away. But we'll go out there and talk, but if everybody could leave the chambers, that way they can get out of here at this time. We just got to remember, they still have to clean up and straighten up. So let's help them get out of here and not loiter inside the chamber.
All right. I would be remiss not to welcome Mr. Beverlin. Thank you so much for joining us, and I look forward to heading into 2020 with you. As for everything else that's coming up, obviously, this Saturday is our Christmas festival, right here in Old Town. 11:00 a.m. is when all the festivities open. Earlier than that, if you're running, but I don't know why anybody would run. I don't get it. 6:00 p.m. is the parade. 7:30 is the tree lighting. So hopefully, we'll see everybody there. If that festival is a bit too much for your little ones, they need a sensory calming experience, the following Saturday, the 14th, is a selfies with Santa event at the Live Oak Unitarian Universalist Church in Cedar Park from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's very sensory-friendly, so it would be quiet and peaceful, so all the little ones can be involved.
All right. I'm excited for Rick. I'm excited for our Christmas festival, and I'm excited to be a part of the city. So thank you very much. And I just pretty much gave you my time, Rick, so I'm good.
I also want to welcome you, Rick. Trial by fire. No, we're so excited to have you here, so thank you. I also just wanted to mention, a year ago this week, our community lost an incredible LISD high school student, Miles Hutchinson, through a car accident. And this year, at the first anniversary, his friends and family, they've chosen an activity to honor his life. So the youth group of North Point Church, they started this challenge. You can go to lovelikemileswithamy.com. And basically, they ask you to write a handwritten note of something sincere, what you're grateful for, what you notice about somebody else, and give it to them, and then snap a picture of it with pound sign, LLM Challenge, at the end. And it's gone crazy wildfire with all of our LISD schools. He was very well-known and liked. And it's a good reminder, this time of year, for us to celebrate life and to celebrate each other's, what brings us joy out of each other. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you all very much.
Yes, I love you, Josh. Just wanted to say that. I wanted to remind everybody, we have a new restaurant opening tomorrow, The Republic. This is on Ronald Reagan. And the pictures that came out are fantastic. It's going to be awesome, I believe. So that's very exciting. So I would encourage us to support a Leander business. Somebody sent me a picture of a billboard that advertises the metro service starting in January on rail service on Saturday, which is awesome, as well as the pickup, the van pickup. So I think we really need to encourage people to use this. It's amenity. We're paying for it, so I hope that everybody will use it. I think it's fantastic. So then, looking at tonight, I mean, when you think about it, this lagoon project, although I've loved it from day one, it looks incredible. So if it works out, I think it'd be a great amenity for Leander. And, you know, things are happening here, and it's exciting to see. So, and it's really good that now we have the stewardship of somebody like Rick Beverlin. So these are exciting times to be in the city. So I appreciate it. Everybody, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and thank you very much. So at that, it is 8:29, and we are adjourned.